Okay. It is exactly five o'clock. Yeah, would you mind with the... Thank you, Todd. Okay, beings, it is five o'clock in the afternoon. Today is Tuesday, March 15, 2016, and we shall begin our council meeting. May I please have a roll call?
Pete Hamel.
Here.
Randy Funker.
Here.
Brad Hent.
Here.
Greg Gils.
Here.
Zach Sawyer.
Here.
Thank you. And first on the agenda is public comments. Now is the time, if there are any public comments, to please come to the podium, state your name, and share with us your public comment. There are none, so we shall move on to the consent agenda. Just to make you aware, as to the appointments to the boards and commissions, Larry Myers will be on the Trails Board, and Rachel Becker will be on the Park and Rec Board. And Rachel is R-A-C-H-A-E-L. The SCAT applicant is Aaron Smith. The Northwest... Village Northwest Run, Walk, and Roll is June 4. Fireworks Display July 1. If you have any questions afterwards about spelling or confirmation of dates, just come up and see me. With that said, are there any questions, comments? If not, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Support.
Thank you. And may I have a roll call, please?
Funker.
Aye.
Gils.
Aye.
Sawyer.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Hent.
Aye.
Thank you.
Going into new business number three, considering the audit, we are going to postpone that, and that will be on our April 6 agenda. With that said, we'll move on to number four, the discussion regarding our Community Development Director position. And at this time, I welcome Rick Nordahl to come up and share some news with us.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Executive Board of the SCDC met two weeks ago and considered the reappointment of Kurt Strout in full support of that board for continuing as the Community Development Director. So, any questions or concerns or thoughts? I'd be more than happy to take questions.
Thank you.
Okay.
Make the motion to approve that?
I'll second that.
Thank you, gentlemen. It is a pleasure to have Kurt coming back on board and continuing with the momentum. Thank you for that recommendation on behalf of the SCDC Board, Rick. Are there any comments, questions? May I have a roll call, please?
Sawyer.
Aye.
Hent.
Aye.
Gils.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Funker.
Aye.
Thank you. Number five on our agenda is the discussion of our Regional Event Center. Before we get into setting dates and times, I've asked Scott to first give us an update on where we stand as far as funds that we have received via grants, pledges, and donations. And after that, we'll get into the discussion of operations.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few items, and I think we're somewhat familiar with some of the recent happenings that has taken place. Just a quick recap as far as where we're at with the funding, as far as the construction, architectural engineering, construction administration, contingencies and whatnot, as far as the funds we have available for the project, the Event Center project. Thus far to date, we're right at approximately $965,000 in donations and pledges towards the project. As you're aware, as of last week, we were awarded $840,000 CAT grant from the Vision Iowa Board. And of course, that's been approved contingent upon moving forward to the project, and of course, contingent upon what the bid award is. But they have approved the $840,000. Other funds and grants that we have earmarked, including the Hotel Motel Tax, the county funding, local option sales tax funds, is approximately $200,000 that we've earmarked as part of the project, which brings us a little over $2 million, which would bring us to the city funding portion, which we'll be discussing here shortly, the general obligation capital loan notes. Our portion would be approximately $3,170,000. So that brings us close to a little over $5,175,000. The reason that's slightly lower than the $5.3 million that we've been figuring is we've subtracted off the preliminary design costs. As part of the CAT grant discussion, due to the fact we had that completed and that had already been paid, that is not an eligible reimbursable cost as part of the CAT grant. So it doesn't change the scope of the project. It's been paid for, it's been funded already. So that brings us to the five... Approximately $5.2 million project. So with that said, is there any specific questions in regards to those funding and the scenario breakdown at this point on the capital portion of the project?
This is just in regards to construction costs? I mean, what you're talking about now?
Yep, that's construction costs. That's all the site work, the construction of the building, the engineering, architectural work, final design work, construction administration. There's contingency funds built into that, that figure as well. Todd, anything else that we're missing? Mechanical, electrical, of course, it's all part of the building. So that does encompass everything.
Infrastructure? Is there any?
Yes, yep. Water and sewer being brought to the site. Access road to the building.
It even includes tables, chairs.
Correct, yeah. And that $200,000 figure, if you recall, early on, we have the FFNE, the furniture fixtures, et cetera, is also all built in the number. AV equipment, we did build a number in for the AV equipment, the kitchen equipment, that's all in that number as well. I don't want to be wrong in that there might be an item here and there, but you know, we tried to be all encompassing, that it's basically kind of turnkey, ready to go with those costs. But that's why we put the contingency fundings in there as well.
Okay. Now, moving into operations.
Yeah, as...
That's just what I was gonna ask.
Yep.
As you're well aware, that's been, you know, obviously, a topic of conversation. We, early on, have shared some information and concerns as far as the operations, based on the study that was completed by Beller King and Associates. And you know, going off that study, you know, that's one of the reasons we hired that firm, to try to give us an all encompassing perspective of what this facility, you know, and how it would operate. Some of the ideas and stuff that I've shared, and just to kind of go over again, as far as some options, we have received a pledge amount towards the operations of the facility of $225,000, and that would be paid over a 10-year period. So that would generate $22,500 per year for 10 years. Local option sales tax, earmarked about $25,000 out of local option sales tax. The reason this question comes up often, well, it seems like we keep pulling everything out of local option sales tax. If you recall, about two years ago, we did pay off the note on the community building renovation project from 1998. We paid that off in advance. That note, we were paying about $150,000 per year. So that has freed up some dollars for us. Right now, we're using some of those dollars to pay back our water improvement fund out at the Water Department, because we use it for our sports complex. But next year will be the last year as far as where we fully refunded that project. So there are dollars available in the local option sales tax. The other discussion we've had is regards to the Hotel Motel Tax. As you're aware, that has been increased from 5% to 7%. So with 2%, we're estimating that each percentage generates about $26,000 per year. So if we'd use that 2%, that'd be approximately $52,000 per year. So adding those numbers together brings us at $99,500, or approximately $100,000. I guess I would recommend as one of the options to earmark towards the operations of the Event Center. Also with that, a separate, and we can have further discussions or a different discussion at a different time, is with the Hotel Motel Tax. One of the ideas and thoughts was, you know, whether we use the 2% or do we consider maybe an additional percentage for future maintenance and upkeep of the area? As we're aware, if we develop the park grounds, the rec trails, the fishing areas, if we could earmark an additional percent, or approximately the $26,000 per year, put that into a separate reserve account, or on an annual basis, we use that, whether it's in our parks budget or a separate budget, for the operations, maintenance, and upkeep of that area going forward, which is also another critical component. If we want to develop that area, that's one thing, to come up the cost of that. The other is to come up the cost to mow the grass and take care of the area as well. So that'd be another thought and recommendation going forward, to probably consider keeping in-house 3% of that 7% local option sales tax, or the Hotel Motel Tax. So with that, I'll open it up to any other thoughts, questions that council members might have, or if that's an option that you think would work.
I think so.
Is it possible to cap any of that at... Have you seen anything in other communities where they commit a certain amount toward it and the rest is assumed by a contractor that runs it, or that kind of thing?
Yes. There's two scenarios that we've looked at. One is city-run, city staff and whatnot. There is another facility that runs it as basically contract. They put a flat amount, and then the amount I know with some of our facilities, they put $75,000 into it. And it's basically spelled out in the contract and agreement for... It covers, you know, the minimal upkeep and maintenance of the facility. They manage, they hire the manager of the facility, they handle all the rentals, they basically operate the facility. City still owns it. There's a separate board or committee that basically handles the operations. They meet on a quarterly basis. If there's items and it's spelled out in the contract that are over a certain dollar amount or threshold, that would have to go back to the City Council for approval, or between the two entities would have to work that out. And that's something, you know, and talking about that too, going forward, I think that's something we need to look in as well, of whether we want to contract the facility out or if we'd look to operate that facility in-house. Personally, looking at the two facilities and how they're run, I think looking at the possibility of contracting it out to a firm that specializes in that area, I think is the route to go. Based on what you said, Pete, we can put a maximum not to a seed for X number of years in there, and then maybe they, you know, agree to five years, seven years in an operating agreement, then it'd have to be reevaluated, you know, after that time. So, you know, then I'd recommend getting out, you know, an RFP, Request for Proposal. You know, I'd certainly contact some companies that I know that do that type work, and see once if there's anybody else out there that would be interested in doing something like that. And if it doesn't work, and there's no interest, and they want more, and we want to consider operating it on our own, we can still do that.
Right.
Just because we do the RFP doesn't require us to enter a contract with them.
I think it'd be in our better interest to request those to find out what is out there. But also, with a facility of this magnitude, it would... I personally, myself, think that it would be in our best interest if we found somebody who does this. They know what they're doing, and they can walk in, open the door, and go to work, and start running the facility. And that's why I personally am in favor of, you know, going out after some RFPs, see what's out... Who is out there interested in running this and capable of running it, without us having to go through a training curve?
And we can cover some of the... We can cover the operations. I think we should look at the RFP and see what we get back. If it's favorable, then let's go that way. We can always fall back on this. I'd like to put out some proposals and move forward on that also, at the same time.
Yeah, I like that idea. I like the idea of somebody having a vested interest in the success.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
There's spelled out, and I'd have to look at it closer on some of the agreements on how it's spelled out. You know, if it's generating, let's say, they put in the $75,000, and from their budgetary standpoint, they're making above and beyond that, that's actually split between the city and the company that's running the facility. So they don't even get, you know, 100% of the proceeds. There's an agreement in there. They actually... The city gets a kickback out of that.
With that third party, is there a thing in there where they have to go by rates that we set for the facility?
I think that's why they have a separate committee that basically, I think, establishes those rates, the agreements, how it's spelled out, approving the budget. So then the city and whatnot have some say-so that, you know, they're not putting fluff in the budget of, you know, higher expenses than what it is based on actual costs. So they do have some say in the operations of it.
You would hate to market yourself out of the picture.
Right.
Right, exactly.
And I mean, you are still gonna have to be competitive. If you price yourself out of the market, it's gonna shoot themselves in the foot as well.
Correct, yeah.
A question I have is in regards to the additional 1% Hotel Motel Tax. Has the marketing committee been brought into the loop on that discussion?
I have not. They're fully aware, and it came up the last marketing committee meeting, as part of their budgetary setup. The 2% they more or less came back and know the city's gonna utilize it probably for something. I have not, and that's based on direction from council. If you say, hey, that's something, you know, we would want to look at, my next step in conversation would, I think, be with the marketing committee to say, here's what the council's thinking. Based on your budgetary needs, is that something you think you would be okay with? And I know you've shared that in the past, Greg, on keeping them in the loop. I've had separate conversation with Heidi and stuff about it, but not with the entire committee, per se.
So there's gonna be some added expense come the summer of start to mow that and maintain that grass area? I think it's something that we need to have that conversation with and tell them that's what we're looking at.
I would agree with Greg's sentiment that we should keep them in the loop, but I do agree that we should look at taking an additional 1%.
Is that just behind... Just maybe on that item, is that consensus? And I can gladly do that of...
Is there... Are they on a fiscal year like us?
They go from January 1 to January 1.
And when do they get their applications for... From people to request funds?
April, May?
Spring, okay, so twice.
Yeah, the spring and fall application deadline, yep.
So we've already... They probably receive spring right about now, and fall will be due, so...
Correct. I know they haven't awarded. I know they talked about it last month, but I wasn't sure of the deadline date, so...
So...
At the end of the year on marketing, do they ever... I mean, do they have a surplus? Or do they try to spend all the funds that we give them?
No, they've banked. They do have a little bit of a surplus right now. Don't hold me to this number, and 30,000...
Well, I'm not, I mean, I just, you know...
They do have a surplus, and the reason being is if the project comes up, you know, they don't try to just spend... Because they don't, they can keep it in their account. You know, one thing they talked about is, you know, signage. Talking about some welcome signs on the east and west entrances. You know, we have the new ones on the north and south. That's one thing. So they've earmarked some funds to possibly be used for that, so they're researching that right now.
That's great. I just think that it would be great to go to the marketing committee and propose that to them, but I would hate to affect this year that we're in, so maybe starting in there next year. That's just a thought, you know, that additional 1%. So that way, they can continue to work the momentum that they have now with the budgets that are in place now. Just a thought.
Yeah, but I think dialogue has to be opened up with them.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I think they need to be kept in the loop, that's for sure.
In all fairness to, we aren't looking to rob them, per se, of their account. Our number annually has grown significantly the last several years.
Absolutely. And given if this comes through, that Hotel Motel Tax could become even greater, be able to do more things with it.
This here, on our claims here, we had the SCDC Hotel Motel Tax for 20... Just under $24,000. What was that for the last quarter of December?
That's for the quarter ending in December, so that was pretty... Yeah, it really doesn't encompass the full 2% increase, because that's, you know, when it happened in November, I believe it was.
Okay.
So we haven't seen a full quarter's worth of the new... Okay, thank you.
And I haven't looked to see how that compares to...
To the year before or something.
Previous years, and it sounds like it's in the ballpark.
I looked at it, because I was like, yeah, it was about $1,000.
Right. So I think from here, we're going to go out and start requesting RFPs?
Is that the only... Is everybody receptive to at least get the RFPs? Get that out to see if there's any interest out there?
Yeah, I think we'll have to see if there is.
And I think, wasn't the motel... Hotel Motel currently had an interest in possibly?
They expressed some...
I'm not sure. Great. Okay, and also, communication with the marketing committee as far as their budget and...
I would say so.
Sure.
Right? Good deal.
General guide, I guess, back to the operations, though, is that kind of in the ballpark of what you think? I mean, it doesn't have to be, because I guess, looking forward, I mean, we're a ways out, it'd be in the next operating budget that, you know, we would actually have to look at that, but at least just a general guideline of general basis of where we're at.
It's the starting point. Yeah, it's the areas that we have funds in.
Right, exactly.
It's not any increase or creating a new revenue that's not there today.
And the general fund doesn't have it in it, so we're gonna have to use those other funds.
Would be good utilization, too, of some of those funds.
It seems fitting, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
You for now.
I can't wait to see what kind of proposals we will be giving back. And then from there, we can decide if that can contract it out or if we'll decide to run it. All right, we're going to move on to 5A. We are now going to set the date and time for a public hearing, and this would be on the plans and specifications and a form of a contract in regards to the Regional Event Center. This public hearing date would be April 20, 2016, at 4:30 in the afternoon. Do we have a motion to approve setting this date and time?
So moved.
Support.
Thank you. May I have a roll call, please? Oh, did you want discussion on the date and time?
Well, clarify that form of contract.
Every time I don't ask for discussion, you've got one. Okay, clarify, pardon me?
Basically, that's the way it's listed in our publication, because it's not a different form of contract, other than it can let you know we're looking at a different kind of form of contract. It's basically that we'd consider approval of the contract if we would award the contract at that meeting. So language-wise, it's called the form of contract. Just consider award of contract.
Okay.
Contract for...
Event Center.
The building then, or...
Yes.
Yes. So this would be setting the date and time for a public hearing for the plans and specifications, and then the possibility of awarding a contract.
So what we're doing after, if this is set, the project's basically going out for bid.
Okay.
Okay.
So then we... The tentative timeframe is April 14 is where we're looking at receiving the bids, so then it gives us enough time to go through those bid documents. And then basically, at the formal hearing meeting would be presented to the City Council on April 20. So it'd be basically reviewing the plans and specs, the bids that are tallied there, and then consider awarding the contract to the apparent low bidder if they meet the criteria.
But Randy, before that, we will talk about the finances. That's next. We'll have that. That date will be two weeks before. So in our next section of that...
No, I understand.
Just want to make sure, okay.
Yeah, he's asking about that.
All right.
Are the construction documents ready at all?
We received... We have the 95% approved documents in my office, so yes.
Okay.
They've done a lot in the last three weeks or whatever, of finalizing items, but...
Okay. Any other discussion or questions regarding setting the date and time for the plans and specifications and form of a contract for the Event Center? Okay, now may I have a roll call?
Sawyer.
Aye.
Gils.
Aye.
Hent.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Funker.
Aye.
Thank you.
Now, the next section is setting the date and time for a public hearing on the general obligation capital loan notes. This is in regards to the resolution fixing date for a meeting on the authorization of a loan agreement and the issuance of not to exceed $3.4 million of general obligation capital loan notes of the City of Sheldon, State of Iowa, for essential corporate purposes and providing for publication of notice thereof. This public hearing date and time will be April 6, 2016, at 4:30 in the afternoon. Do we have a motion to set the public hearing for a date? The date and time for the public hearing?
So moved.
Support.
Thank you. Are there questions or comments? Thank you. May I have a roll call, please?
Hamel.
Aye.
Hent.
Aye.
Funker.
Aye.
Gils.
Aye.
Sawyer.
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. Number six on our agenda is the sludge pipe modification project, and I'd like to pretend I know what I'm talking about, but this is up your alley, Todd, so... We have a change order in the amount of $1,445. Can you share what that might be about? If you don't mind. Thanks.
Todd and sludge kind of go together, don't they?
Yeah. Lately, it's been...
The change order for $1,445 is for one valve and three 6x4 reducer bushings that were not in the bid tab, but we put in as part of the project.
Great. Thank you.
They're installed, we needed them.
We needed them. Awesome. Real simple.
Yep.
Wasn't so hard. Okay, do we have a motion to approve the change order to increase in the amount of $1,445?
So moved.
Support.
Thank you. Questions? Comments? Any discussion? A roll call, please?
Funker.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.[1503.97]
Work being done, so far so good?
Yeah, project looks really good. The work that's done, all the valves are installed, the pumps are installed. Basically, all the plumbing is done. The only thing we're left is we're waiting on the VFD and the electrical work. The VFD, unfortunately, once we got it ordered, by the time we got it approved, it had a 10-week build time. So we're just sitting back waiting on the VFD. If the VFD comes in a matter of a few days, we could have the project up and using. We're currently already using just the plumbing portion of it, and it has helped the efficiency of our sludge removal process already.
What does that stand for, or don't they want to know?
VFD, Variable Frequency Drive. So it allows you to run pumps at different speeds by turning the knob, basically.
Glad you knew that business. Okay, any other questions, comments?
Make the motion to approve.
Thank you.
Support.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? May I have a roll call, please?
Gils.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Sawyer.
Aye.
Hens.
Aye.
Funker.
Aye.
Thank you. And number seven on our agenda is setting the date and time for a public hearing on the hangar project out at the airport. That date will be April 6, 2016, 4:30 in the afternoon. Do we have a motion to approve setting this date and time?
Make the motion.
Support.
Any questions? Roll call, please?
Sawyer.
Aye.
Gils.
Aye.
Hens.
Aye.
Funker.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Thank you. And last on our agenda, any comments? You're coming back? Oh, wow.
Just two things quickly. April of 2013, we asked you guys to go ahead and agree to putting Sheldon on a water watch. Things have improved a lot since then. We actually considered maybe lifting the water watch last fall. We decided we would wait, because a lot of times during the winter, our well levels decline. But fortunately, this winter, we had a wet winter, and our well levels actually increased through the winter instead of decreasing. So Keith and I have talked, and we feel like we could lift the water watch in Sheldon.
Nice, very nice.
Good. How are the shallow water wells doing?[1640.63]